It's too short.
This feels kind of weird.
I think it was even making me.
Yeah, it was eleven hour. Yeah.
Does anybody want?
That's right.
Oh, God.
Say, um, we have Karen.
Okay.
You ready?
Hmm.
You ready?
I'm not.
I am.
Uh.
Is that mine or?
Yes. I can start, okay. The school board of the Duval County School District has now convened in an emergency board meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that are re- that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial nor operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of good courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile devices be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our comments from the audience portion of the board meeting, please note that we only accept speaker cards until four P M. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. Purpose of the meeting. This emergency meeting is called in accordance with school board policy two point two six, based on determination that urgent public matters require a discussion and action by the board. Pursuant to board policy two point two six, board members may attend board meetings and participate and vote through the use of interactive video and/or telephone systems. We were going to have a board member who was not present phone in, but I have received word that she will be unable to phone in, so we will not be approving this portion for someone to phone in, call in by phone to participate. Approval of. Where's the? Okay. Approval of July twenty-three, twenty nineteen agenda that the Duval County School Board approved, the July twenty-three, twenty-nine agenda as submitted on July twenty-two, twenty nineteen with the. Uh, this was a change to vote for the, um, for telephone, so I apologize. Okay. There's no change made to that, so we are just voting on the agenda, I apologize. Uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
It was mo- it was moved by board member Anderson and seconded by, uh, board member Willie. Please register your, are there any comments? Not, register your vote.
Board Chair, just a moment, Vice Chair Jones needs to sign in.
Okay, I did.
He just did.
He was here first.
Fire actions, you approved this six, zero. We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Those wishing to address the board must fill out a blue speaker card. The school board welcomes your comments on matters that are before the board for consideration. It's not the board's intent to respond, but to use the input and our deliberations. To give courtesy, um. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, please refrain from audible comments or applause. When you are called upon, please state your name. For the record, please limit your comments to three minutes. You will be notified when thirty seconds remain and also when your time is up. If your concerns exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until four o'clock. Do we have any speaker cards? Seeing none, we are on to the discussion agenda. Discussion item, approval to hire independent legal counsel. That the Duval County School Board approved the hiring of outside legal counsel to provide legal services to the board regarding its May seven, twenty nineteen resolution regarding levy of a discretionary one-half cent school capital outlay survey, surtax to be added to the November twenty nineteen ballot. Is there a motion?
Second.
It was moved by board member Grimes and seconded by Vice Chair Jones. Are there any members who wish to speak regarding this item? Vice Chair Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that we're at a point unfortunate that we have to proceed with, uh, outside counsel. It's something that I don't think any of us desire to do, but in order to protect the interests of the school district and most importantly, that the work that we are doing for our children, I think it's important that we seek outside counsel. It's not unheard of. Of course, the, uh, general counsel has to give the value appraisal board the, uh, abilities to go out and hire outside counsel because in this case, the general counsel cannot represent both the value adjustment board and the, and the property appraiser. So in this case, I think we have a difference of opinion. And, uh, uh, over his, his, uh, his memo, it's not legally binding opinion, but it is his memo. And I think it's important that we, uh, in this, for the sake of our children and to move this issue forward, that we proceed with the hiring outside counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Um, yes. Um, we received the memo from Jason Gabriel this afternoon that said that he would provide the board with a legally binding opinion by August the thirteenth. Is that correct? Ms. Chastain?
Through the chair to board member Joyce and to the board members, good afternoon. Yes, that is correct. And at some point, I'd like to be recognized as I do not understand this agenda item. And before I offer any comments, I want to make sure I understand.
The. The, um, the statute. Can you re- can you tell us what the statute says?
What statute?
The one about the putting a placing agenda, I mean, placing this vote on a ballot. Do you have that one in front of you?
Uh, through the chair to board member Joyce, I'm not, i- is it the surtax statute?
Yes.
I don't have that in front of me.
Uh, if, if I recall correctly, it says that the do- the, um, city council shall place the certs, the, um, surtax on a ballot. Is that correct?
Uh, through the chair, I d- I don't have it in front of me. If I need to, if we need to take a few minutes, I can pull it up and read it.
Well, my, my problem with this is that there is no ballot in twenty nine, in, in twenty nineteen, in November. We do have a ballot. If you go to the supervisor of elections office, there's a ballot in twenty twenty. So I feel like this is premature, in my opinion. But, um, board chair Hershey has a meeting with Mr. Gabriel tomorrow. The city council was providing questions to the school board and that was, their deadline was today. So, you know, I just feel like this is premature and we should not be sitting here today.
So, um, I would just like to respond. I did, uh, schedule a meeting with Jason Gabriel last week for tomorrow, just to, my calendar, that Wednesday worked out better. But we did have a board, uh, meeting on Thursday and had conversation regarding this topic. I'd also like to point out that, um, while yes, uh, Jason Gabriel did say in his memorandum that he would offer an opinion by August thirteenth, that ensures that it will not happen in twenty nineteen because it's my understanding that the supervisor of elections needs a decision by about the middle of August in order to make twenty nineteen work. What's also interesting to note is that, um, in his opinion that was sent, um, Mr. Gabriel advises that his opinions are binding and that the school board cannot employ independent counsel to challenge his opinions. However, the charter provision the general counsel relies upon states that his opinions shall be considered valid and binding unless and until it is overturned or modified by a court of competent jurisdiction. That is why, based upon the fact, I went back through my calendar and I would be curious to see what some other board members, particularly board member Grimes, Vice Chair Jones and, and, uh, board member Anderson, as well as board member Willie. I would even like to see, uh, from board member Smith Wurres, how many meetings that we have had in the past about forty-five, sixty days. I alone have had over thirty-five meetings with groups, with individuals. On top of the twenty meetings we have already had, I have, I did not bring it with me, I meant to, but I have a stack of papers from emails that have been offered by the school district, uh, for questions. Every ca- question that I heard at the city council, at the finance meeting last Tuesday was a, was a question that our superintendent answered in the meeting with the mayor the previous Friday. We have answered a lot of questions at this particular point and it's becoming quite clear that, um, the intent to work with this board, um, is, um, waning. We heard that twenty twenty was the desired date and back in June, the finance committee amended our resolution to twenty twenty. It sailed through that finance meeting and a seven oh vote. I don't know what happened between the finance meeting and the rules committee meeting, but something ha- happened because it was shot down. That was very clear to me that the issue was not about twenty twenty. And at this particular time, we are spending a half a million dollars a month to address repairs on our facilities that are not permanent fixes. This is concerning. I will say, yes, my children have graduated from Duval County Public Schools, but I have nieces and nephews still enrolled. I have great nieces and nephews coming up through the school system and not to mention, um, the community and constituents that I represent. And I believe they deserve to go to schools that are safe and secure and have the ability to be facilities that promote learning in the twenty-first century. So I support this, this action. Are there any other comments?
I would like to make another one, but go ahead, can I please? Um, before, I, I think that, like I said, I think we're a little premature here. I think that we should meet with this, um, with Jason Gabriel. He also said, stated in this memo that he would reach out, um, to the attorney general for an opinion. So that's a free second opinion that we can get right away without spending taxpayer money and going to go out and get, um, ex- outside litigation. So I think that we need to allow the attorney general to weigh in on it. I think that we need to meet with Jason Gabriel. As I said, premature, just another week, s- something. But I think this is premature, just to go ahead and just say we are going to go seek outside counsel without exhausting all of these resources.
Are there any other comments from board members?
Can I yield and recognize our, our counsel, so she can talk through the, the confusion with the, with the recommendation?
I'm not, um, familiar with the, um, protocol, uh, for that. We have, have you read the memorandum sent from Jason Gabriel that was sent out?
I'm reading it now.
I mean, I, I'm thinking that, um, he spells out in that memorandum, um, some, poses some questions, I would think. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Chastain, other than what was, uh, presented by, uh, Jason Gabriel?
Um, yes, ma'am. To the board, uh, Mr. Gabriel is unable to attend tonight or he would be here. This meeting was scheduled late yesterday afternoon and unfortunately, right now, he has an irreconcilable conflict. He is looking forward to meeting with the chairman tomorrow, which was scheduled a week ago. And, and hopefully that will be a good conversation. It is my understanding that notwithstanding all of the conversations that have been had with various elected officials, that there has not been a conversation directly with Mr. Gabriel, the general counsel. Therefore, we request that the board defer taking any action tonight, which is the way I read it, to approve hiring outside legal counsel. And specifically, in the recommendation of the agenda item, the charter provides for a process by which outside counsel can be hired and this agenda item is contrary to those legal requirements. So if this is approved, it is beyond your powers and authority.
Okay. Any other comments? Board member Anderson?
I have a lot of thoughts, but, um, first and foremost, can, can you explain or whomever can explain exactly what this vote does?
This vote would be a vote by the board, um, that would say that we agree to pursue outside counsel.
Voting to agree to pursue outside counsel would happen imminently? Would that happen after a conversation with Jason Gabriel? When, is there a timeframe for how we would proceed with that?
So we have to take this step before we would begin, begin a process of looking at what that outside counsel would, would look like. But, um, based upon the conversation that we had on Thursday, part of the discussion centered around the clear conflict of interest of being represented, um, by the office of general counsel in this conflict with the interpretation of the state statute that says shall where it was changed. Uh, and that has, what has opened pretty much Pandora's box and while we're here sixty days later. And, um, you know, I guess at this particular point, if, um, this action allows, the, the board is agreeing to pursue outside counsel that would be outside of, uh, the recommendation of the office of general counsel.
I, on the one hand, I agree with board member Joyce. I'm a little nervous about the haste that we're moving forward, um, with this. I participated in the conversation on Thursday. And I think that there is a lot of reason to have outside counsel. I think that the, the initial memo, which we, which we had been commonly referring to as an opinion that we have recently discovered is not a legally binding opinion, that allows the, the counsel to have more authority on this matter than was originally expected. And I think as we see this play out in Clay County, it's clear that the commission is, that commission too, has maybe, um, moved beyond their authority and I, and I do have concerns. I think that we are state constitutional officers and it's very clearly identified what our role is in this. And I don't think that the, the questions that are coming out from the counsel are, um, not under their purview. We have done this work and so it's frustrating that the questions lead to more questions. With that being said, what I don't want to do, I think that we have, we have tried really, really hard to be congenial and to, to work through this process, um, in a way that is cooperative, as cooperative as possible. I sat with most of you, um, last Tuesday and we did not hear that same congenial spirit being returned and that's, that was certainly concerning to me. I just want to make sure that we are not, um, that we're not burning bridges. That if, if we go into a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Gabriel, that, um, that we can still be productive. I, I, I'm nervous about what happens when we move forward, um, beyond our, beyond statute, beyond the charter, to seek outside counsel without following the appropriate route. And so I'm not sure where we went from Thursday for requesting a letter to be sent to, to now voting on this matter today before you meet with him tomorrow. So can you help me? I mean, I, it's not that I don't think that it's an important probable route to go. I just am trying to understand how we got here today.
So, well, I had a lot of conversations with a lot of outside, uh, counsel. A lot of people, uh, reached out to me, had multiple conversations with people. And the, um, the, the recommendations that I received were, was that this board does, um, in fact, um, have standing in this situation and can challenge this with outside assistance. It was never my intent at, when I scheduled the meeting with Jason Gabriel, to take a letter that came out of, uh, conversation from Thursday. And it was my understanding from that, and that letter has not been, uh, written, but that that was really kind to, I don't want to say put on notice, but to say, you know, we are going to seek outside opinion and that was what we walked away with. And it was just the best steps in how to get there. The reason, uh, for the meeting today is that we have a meeting at five o'clock and I know that some people have conflicts towards the end of the week. And, uh, it just seemed that based upon the conversation that took place on Thursday, that this would be something that we could go ahead and address in a timely man- manner so that we could move forward. I was under the impression at the meeting on Thursday that there was a consensus of the board to move forward and pursue, uh, outside counsel. Any other comments?
Through the chair to Karen, Ms. Chastain. But what you're saying is this board doesn't have the ability to do that. We don't have the authority to do that under the charter.
Through the chair to board member Joyce, correct. So, uh, an important step in the process is being skipped.
Through, through the chair, what step? Can you ex- um, expand on what step you're referring to exactly?
Through the chair to board member Willie, and the, the step is going to the general counsel and making the request. This, the way I understand this agenda item, there, there is no going to the general counsel and making the request pursuant to the terms of the charter for his review. I, I don't, that, that hasn't happened. In fact, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, a conversation. So this emergency meeting and this agenda item came up.
So through the chair, that sort of speaks to, on page one, on the second to last paragraph, the last sentence says, "All legal services, all legal service requests for outside counsel for the entire consolidated government go through and must be approved by the general counsel." So if we, even if we pursue and get outside legal counsel, does it then have to go and get approved by the general counsel?
Through the chair to board member Willie, that is the process. The general counsel approves any retention of outside counsel.
So, thinking of, through, through the chair once again, thinking about the timeline of where we're trying to hit to make sure we hit by twenty nineteen, we're worried about the August thirteenth date because we don't think it'll make it on, on the twenty nineteen. But if we approve something today and then have to actually send it over to general counsel, what is, what is the time or gap between them saying, yes, you're approved and now you can actually retain counsel? Are we going to still run into a similar issue of not having enough time? And I don't even know who that, that is directed towards. Maybe it's to, to, to the chair and/or to Ms. Chastain.
Through, through the chair to board member Willie, I don't know how to answer that because a request hasn't been made of the general counsel.
Vice Chair Jones, did you want to say something?
I, I think the, uh, dilemma that we find ourselves in, which is unusual, is the fact that the general counsel represents this board and has issued an opinion that we thought was legally binding opinion. And we found out just last week that it's not. So, no one told this board that it was not legally binding. And now we got to wait until the thirteenth before we can get a legally binding opinion on whether or not shall means may, um, or not. That's concerning to me. I respect the process, but the general counsel, there has, there are checks and balances in our government. There are checks and balances. And if we don't have the ability to go out and get outside counsel, then where's the check? I mean, it, who's to think today that his legally binding opinion is going to be indifferent than the memo that we received, uh, several months ago? I don't see it being indifferent. And if there's a conflict, then this body has a responsibility to seek an additional opinion. And we can't do that without asking the same person that issued the opinion that doesn't want to see his, his opinion reversed. So we have to take, we have to do something, uh, to move this process along. Had we gotten a legally binding opinion months ago, then we could have been in this position a lot earlier. We would have known that we got a legally binding opinion. If we disagree with it, then let's look at outside counsel. We just found out last week that we don't have a legally binding opinion. So, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I respect Ms. Chastain. I respect the, uh, general counsel's office. But I think the charter gives a board the opportunity to get outside counsel for, to review. I mean, we're not suing anybody. I mean, that was the whole purpose of consolidations, to prevent the, the lawsuits between the county and the city government. We're not suing, we're just getting an outside counsel so we can get a second opinion. And I think that, and that's, that, that's where I think the difference is.
And I would just add too, that, um, we did not think like our counterparts in Clay County who had the same verbiage in their resolution. So they did not have to come back and, um, a- and have this conversation. And I recognize the fact that we're consolidated government, but they put this in this, the resolution, we did not. I think part of that to what Vice Chair Jones said was, we had not anticipated a sixty-day roadblock. And it has been about sixty days when I look at the calendar from the time we voted until, uh, now. And I think about, um, the conversations that I have had, the meetings that I have attended, and we simply have not moved, I, it hasn't moved at all. And at what point do we, as an elected body who are state constitutional officers, take a stand? And truly, we all say we're going to stand up for students. At what point do we take a stand and really, um, stand up and try to do the right things for, for students? Board member Anderson?
As, as we've been having this conversation, I, um, read through a sentence in the memo we got earlier today and, and from Mr. Gabriel, he says, "Using the language of the charter, no officer, agency, or employee can demonstrate the need to hire outside counsel if the purpose of that counsel is to take a legal position inconsistent with the general counsel's binding legal opinion." I guess when I read that, what I'm hearing is kind of a rock and a hard place. Now that I'm looking, you know, back through it. And so, um, although I wish that there was time to go through a, a different process to be able to ask for a legally binding opinion, wait to get that, um, process rolled out, he says here that he's going to ask for the attorney general to move through it. I mean, but we're talking about a lot of time. And then when I contrast that with the need that our schools have and the reason that we asked for a twenty nineteen vote to begin with, it really feels like our hands are tied and that's a pretty frustrating to be as an elected body. Especially when it feels like that was pretty intentionally done and continues to be done intentionally. Because I don't, I don't really understand why we wouldn't be able to get a. Because I don't, I don't really understand why we wouldn't be able to get a legally binding opinion before August 13th. And I think if there was a demonstrated effort to be cooperative or to work together, we might've seen a different date, and maybe tomorrow we'll get a different date or a different answer. But in the case that that doesn't happen, and we continue to be held up from moving forward, it sounds to me like we're making this vote that would allow us to move forward with that if that becomes necessary. And the anticipation at this point, based on the memo here, the memos we've received previously, is that the, the legally binding opinion won't change much from what we received in May. Again, that was in May. We are now at the end of July, and we're closing in on a window that's gonna allow our, our schools to get the maintenance that they desperately need. A reminder that that is $243 million in deferred maintenance now. If we wait until January 2021, that grows to $356 million and continues to balloon to a billion. So it's, it's, the time is of the essence. I genuinely wanna say thank you to Ms. Chastain. I can't imagine the position that this must be for you, and so your guidance and your consultation is always appreciated. I wish that the, the information we had received in the beginning was, had been a legally binding opinion, and that's how we were operating. It's a little frustrating, as Board Member Jones has pointed out, now to, to receive information that we've been, we've been moving without this legally binding opinion. And so I don't, I guess I don't see another way forward on the timeline that we have been given, to do the work that we need to do, that as constitutional officers we have a right to do and a responsibility to do for the constituents that we serve.
One more, Joyce.
So I just wanna reiterate, if I, if that statute is interpreted this way, that it, the item has to be placed on a ballot. Again, there is no ballot in 2019. So the board has requested the city council to put it on a special ballot. There is obviously no appetite in City Hall to do that. So, 2019, 2020 would be the next general election. And I do wanna say that Mr. Gabriel wrote in this memo, "I am going to request that the city council pass an emergency resolution at the meeting to forward the opinion to the attorney general for the state of Florida to also weigh in on the matter." And I have an opinion here from the attorney general, April 8, 1998. This issue came up in Hernando County, and the, they asked the question, and the response of the attorney general was, "As the legislature has imposed on the board of county commissioners the responsibility of placing the issue on a ballot, it appears that the county commission would set the date for the referendum. However, should, they should work together with the school board to determine a date that is amendable to both governmental entities." And so I would just request that before we move forward with this, that we have a conversation with Mr. Gabriel tomorrow, and that we seek the attorney general's opinion before we hire outside counsel, which is taxpayer dollars, which I do not feel like is necessary at this point.
So, you know, we hear 2020 a lot. I've had three meetings with the mayor, and I've met with, I, I attended, I, I stayed up late, nine o'clock, kinda ready to call it a day. And I got kinda punchy after nine o'clock, but it was a late night at City Hall, and many of us were there. I have sat through four committee meetings, two city council meetings, and by the way, public comment at a city council meeting is at the very end of the meeting. Again, I'm going to go back to there, we've heard 2020 a lot. The resolution that we sent over, the legislation, said November 2019. In June of 2019, the Finance Committee voted 7-0 to amend that legislation to, to November of 2020. It got shot down in rules, and it got shot down at the last meeting of that, of the past city council and sent back to Finance. I attended the entire day, as did many board members. I do, I do not believe I saw you there at that meeting on that, on that day with the new council, but it was quite clear to me at the new council that they, with, between Finance and Rules, that 2020 wasn't even the date. There was a lot of talk about charter schools, how much money we're gonna give to charter schools, how much we're gonna set aside for charter schools. So what I have seen over the past 60 days of, as I have had conversations and attended meetings, is that the goalposts move. And I really believe with my whole heart that had the 7-0 vote out of Finance in June, gone to rules, and then approved by the city council at the end of June, that this board would've honored that date change. I have, there is no doubt in my heart that we would've honored that date change. I'm growing more and more concerned that it is bigger than just a date. And I feel that it is my responsibility as a constitutional officer, and what we were sworn in to do and to uphold our responsibilities, that it is now at this particular point, time for us to take a stand.
One more question. Okay, I'm so sorry. I, I'm wondering if we, we move, we, we take this step at this point in time, what, what is the repercussion or what is the ramification from the office of general counsel? I, I'm currently receiving information that Mr. Gabriel is speaking on this now at the agenda meeting over at city council. And so, if this is a step that we move forward with, what, what is the ramification?
I mean, I, I don't know. I think that's probably to be determined. I mean, we, it's been a hard call all along. Vice Chair Jones, did you?
Yeah, I, I, that's a good question. I think if we move forward and vote to approve independent legal counsel, that's not gonna happen tomorrow. The chairperson, chairwoman, her's meeting with Jason Gabriel. We still have time to have that meeting and work out any options that are available to us before we go out and secure outside legal counsel. So that gives us some time, because this process, you gotta do a, a, a RQ, a request for, not qualifications, and then they would submit those, and that process takes a little while. So, if Mr. Gabriel has any other recommendations for us to consider, then we had opportunity to do so. But it's ironic, and I look at the calendar date, that his opinion, legally binding opinion, would be given on August 13th, which is the date of the next council meeting, which means that it could not come out, even if he says, "I had a change of mind, the council has to put on the ballot," it couldn't come out till the 27th. Is that by design?
Speaker committees and everything.
Yeah. Is that by design? I don't know. But it's ironic that the date is August 13th, which is the first meeting of the council in the month of August.
Board Member Anderson?
I'm, I'm wondering if Ms. Chastain has any information about what would be the next steps for our OGC if we pursued outside counsel without permission?
Through the chair to Board Member Anderson, I, I don't know what the next steps would be. I'm just here to tell you today that engaging outside counsel outside of the process is invalid.
What I don't, what does invalid mean?
It's beyond your powers and authority.
And so, if we moved forward, we had outside counsel, we were able to get a legally binding opinion, went to a judge, a judge was able to issue maybe some order of action, like we should move forward. I mean, does that supersede the office of general councils?
Through the chair to Board Member Anderson, I, I don't know how to answer this, but all of these actions are going to take weeks and weeks, and there's a meeting set tomorrow for the general counsel, which is the first time there's been a conversation, which is, I go back to, we, we request that you do not take action tonight, and that you have a conversation with Mr. Gabriel.
What happens if we do not take action tonight, and that conversation does not go well? I mean, it, maybe it will be different than the other 35 conversations I have had. With different people, I know I have not met with Mr. Gabriel, and I'm just talking people in a position to, 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 to take action and, and help resolve this. Then we still have to come back and have this conversation again if we want to pursue outside counsel. This, all this does is just say, this is an option we have on the table. We've decided that, that as a board, that this is one of our options. It does not mean that tomorrow there is someone who represents the, the board. It just means we are doing, like I said, Clay County had this in their resolution, so they did not have to come back and do that. That hints they were able to act swiftly. I believe they filed paperwork at the end of Friday or first thing Monday this week. So they were able to act a little differently. We did not include that in ours, because we went in in good faith that we could work together, that we could resolve. I remember the conversation at the table in May, and I think at that particular point, this board recognized some changes in legislation and that 2020 was a possibility. But it was very clear at the committee meetings and at the city council meeting, the last committee meetings that happened just about a week or so ago, that that was not the appetite at this particular time of the current council. Yes?
Through the chair to Ms. Chastain, if the board approves this agenda item tonight, as we move forward, we would probably be engaged in some sort of legal battle with the city at that point. Was that, is that?
If we hire counsel.
If we hired counsel, which, as, as you stated, is not our authority, we don't have the authority to do that. So now we are engaged in a legal battle with the city, the general counsel's office. Is there a possibility that in this battle, that they, we jeopardize getting it on in November of 2020 ballot?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I, I honestly don't know the answer to that, because it would be speculating on a series of future actions that I, I am not comfortable making that type of speculation. It's too remote, it's too, I don't know how to answer that, to be honest with you. And for me to speculate, excuse me, I think would be really inappropriate. Thank you.
Through, through the chair. So, at this point, I'm trying to, to figure out, how do we make a decision to go for legal counsel if, I'm hearing that we, it's not gonna be even legal that we're going for legal counsel? Who did we, in that meeting, Chair, Vice Chair, if you all can explain, how do we make this decision? Who interpreted the charter to say like, yes, this, this is legal for us to do, versus what I'm hearing right now from our council, saying that actually we haven't gone through the right steps? I'm trying to just figure out where we are, because I don't wanna go through all these steps and then have to circle back, and then have to go through the other steps, and now we've, we've hurt a relationship or burned a bridge, when we know this is only the first step to actually get this on the ballot, then actually have it voted for? So I'm just trying to figure out, who, who has decided, who interpreted it? Because we have an interpretation from our lawyer, our legal counsel, and now I'm hearing that we, we don't agree with that, and we think we can go forward, that we've done it the right way. So I'm just trying to figure that out.
So, last Thursday, there was a board member meeting that Board Member Smith Warhouse had, had instigated. I know that you were unable to attend. And at that time, there was a conversation, and I think there were six of us there. Majority of those present felt like due to the events of Tuesday at the Finance and Rules Committee, that we were at a standstill and were not moving forward. And it was during that discussion, most of that discussion, all of that discussion, was the question of, will we pursue outside counsel? So, we can, in, in order for us to do it, we have to agree and have a formal vote, not just a consensus of, yes, there were six people there, and five people at that particular time seemed to be in support. So that's what we got here. So, the, the question about if you go through the charter, and I will tell you that I have spoken with multiple attorneys, lawyers in Jacksonville, have had a lot of people call and reach out to me, and have reviewed the charter with several. And the, the part of the charter that states that the office of general counsel's attorney is valid and binding, it also says in the charter, unless and until is overturned or modified by a court of competent jurisdiction. So that is the, you know, option that, you know, would allow us to pursue. So, at this particular point, what we are voting on today and the purpose of this meeting is a follow-up on the conversation that we had Thursday, to decide as a board that we would seek outside counsel moving forward in order to make this, you know, happen. So, I mean, is there any other conversation? Does anybody else remember the conversation from Thursday differently than, than I do? Or, Board Member Grimes, were you?
No, I think that's the road we were going down, but I'm wondering if, I mean, and I know it has been here all along, that they, basically, if we want an outs, if we want outside counsel, we have to go through the general counsel to do it, right?
Through, through the chair to Board Member Grimes, yes.
So, I guess this question was already asked, but if we circumvented that way, would that cause some issues?
Through the chair to Board Member Grimes, possibly, but I'd be speculating as to what they are. What I'm hearing today to say is that a decision to hire outside counsel and the engagement of outside counsel without going through the process is, is invalid. It's, it's illegal, it violates the charter, it doesn't follow the process. So, I, I know, I, I understand the frustration, and, and I'm hearing a lot of things directed at perhaps other officials when there has not yet been a conversation with the general counsel, Mr. Gabriel, which is why I wasn't, I wasn't in attendance on Thursday. I was not invited. I was unaware that that was happening, and nobody contacted me. So here we are today now with another agenda item that appears to be setting forth a, a recommendation, the action of which doesn't follow the requirements of the charter.
What I can say is that if we do not vote on this today, and it does not pass today, and the conversation tomorrow does not go well, or keep in mind that the office of general counsel appoints or sends us to legal counsel that we may or may not want, then we come back and we have this conversation again. This does not say that we hire anybody. This just says that this is an option that we are keeping open in order to move forward, because we have really exhausted, and I realize that I have not met with Jason Gabriel yet, but we have certainly exhausted a lot of, a lot, various avenues to move this forward. We are about 60 days into this, into this process, and still at square one. Vice Chair Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you know, I don't take it lightly. I mean, no one wants to disregard the, the legal counsel we've been given. I mean, that's certainly not something we wanna do, and, but I, I think, given what's at play and what's at stake, I think we have to move forward. Having said that, I would like to offer an amendment that would allow this to move forward, and also ask the director, the chairperson, to request outside counsel when she meets with the general counsel tomorrow. And if that's not granted, then this resolution would move forward as written.
Did you get that, Nina?
That we would amend this item, that would become effective, subject to the chairperson not being denied the opportunity to get outside counsel. And that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow?
Yes, 11 o'clock.
And if the meeting is not held, then we would move forward getting outside counsel. And if an outside, request for outside counsel is denied, then we would still move forward with. And if an outside, request for outside counsel is denied, then we would still move forward with the resolution.
So I love amendments because it makes it a little, little complicated when we go to vote. So it's my understanding then we would vote on the amendment?
Just a moment, I need, I mean, I'm gonna need a minute.
Okay, but can she explain the process, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. While the administrators are preparing the language for your vote. So the amendment is on the floor, it needs a second.
Okay.
And then once it's seconded, there's discussion on the amendment. And if you're ready to vote, you vote on the amendment first. And it depends on whether that passes or fails. If it fails, you're back to the original main motion unchanged. If it passes, now your motion on the floor is the original agenda item with the approved amendment. Does that make sense?
Yes. And that was, I thought. So Vice Chair Jones has?
Second.
Oh, second, thank you. So it was moved by Vice Chair Jones and seconded by Board Member Anderson that this item be amended to become effective subject to the denial of the Office of General Counsel to pursue outside counsel. So I guess what that means is that if, in the conversation tomorrow and asking for outside counsel, if it is denied, then this would be our next step. Is that, is that correct? Does everyone understand that? Nina, did you get that?
Through the chair to Ms. Chastain, what I have currently is that the Duval County School Board amend the agenda item to come effective subject to meeting with outside general counsel. And I couldn't hear the rest.
Become effective if?
If I may, I would remove the word outside and say the general counsel?
I'm sorry, office.
Office of general counsel.
Office of general counsel. I think what it is, is that if the Office of General Counsel denies the request for outside counsel, then we would move forward.
And become effective.
Then it would become effective. So the implementation of the vote tonight would be contingent upon the conversation tomorrow and the decisions that were made there.
We can discuss now?
I don't know, we have to ask Karen?
Yes, you have a motion to second.
Can we discuss now, Karen? Okay, yes. All right.
I guess my concern with that is, I don't see how he's going to grant that tomorrow based on this memo when he is asking for an emergency resolution to get an opinion from the Attorney General. So again, I just, I don't think, based on the memo, that that's going to be granted tomorrow. There's a little bit of time that needs to happen here before we get to that point. And I am concerned that this just causes more division than it, than we already have and that we are jeopardizing what could potentially happen next year. So I can't support the amendment because I believe that the opinion from the Attorney General could move in our favor. So, and we would not have to, again, use taxpayer dollars to seek outside counsel. We have a free second opinion right here.
Any other comments?
So I would love to see through the chair, like what the process, because there seems to be a request. It says all legal services, service requests for outside counsel must come through and be approved. So what is that process? Because he's probably going to say, well, there's a process for that and you need to submit this or that. And I wonder, have we done that? Like what is our step in that? Because there's a process to everything. That's why we're sitting up here, because there's a process. And I just wonder what that is because that is stated in the memo. I know that that is probably going to happen in conversation. And will we be able to get an answer immediately? Because he will probably say, yeah, it has to go through this process. Does that then extend it?
Well, through the chair, to Board Member Willie, I totally agree with that. But I also would caution that we have a memo that says that we, the city council, does not have to put on the ballot, they can debate it. Had that not, had that legal, legally binding opinion, had we had that in May, we would have had opportunity to do it. But the fact that, that somehow we would do, deceive intentionally or unintentionally, I just feel that we have waited long enough. And unfortunately, just found out last week that we don't have a legally binding opinion. Now, whether that was intentional or not, I don't know. But I think this gives us an opportunity to at least request it. And if it takes a process, and that process goes past the end of this month, I don't think that's something we, I don't think that's something I want to do.
Through the chair, are we asking for him to approve a request for, to do it, or approve us to get one?
Well.
In your amendment, was it?
To make it clear, the quest is to allow us to get one, not to go through a process.
Okay.
But to see, and that's a good point. I didn't clarify that.
And the other thought that I had, I know, I feel like there's also a protocol. This is through the chair to the chair, where actually the chair and vice chair can actually make this decision. Is that true?
No, we can't make the decision. We can only implement it if the board approves it.
You implement if the board approves?
Right.
Got it.
That's why we're having this conversation now.
Chair, vice chair, can't sign on anything unless it's approved by?
Right. Any other discussion?
I'm more comfortable with the item being amended so that we go through an appropriate protocol of making the request. I anticipate that, you know, I anticipate that that will not be granted based on the languages in the memo we received today. But I do think that that's an appropriate course of action to take nonetheless and can support the amendment. And I think that strengthens the matter overall.
Can I ask one final question? So we're worried about time. So if we, if we were to hire our own outside legal counsel, can we talk about what that potential timeline could be? Because we're comparing it to this timeline. And I'm all for making a stand and doing what we need to do. But I'm also, I understand this is a, this is a longer race. So where does that put us? Because if we still have to request for their credentials and that kind of thing, can, is there a rough timeline? Does that put us at the end of August? Where does, do we know where that puts us?
I'm not sure who's the matter of purchasing.
Well, I don't know the answer to that question.
Expedited process.
Right. And I know there's a way to expedite it. I know that there is language and policy, I don't have it with me, that says that we can select counsel. I can tell you, I've had a lot of people reach out to me. So having people who are ready, willing, and able to respond, I think that we would have that very quickly. But I, I mean, I can't, I can't answer that today. I wasn't prepared for that question, just, you know, based upon our conversation from Thursday, if we were going to move forward with a desire to seek outside counsel. And now we have the amendment. But I do not, I'm not, I don't know how purchasing works and that timeline. And I think it is a little different for legal services, yes.
So is there, is through, I guess to Ms. Chastain, is there a difference between the, you have going between the, going through the general counsel for for helping us with a outside counsel, saying yes? Is what happens if we say, okay, you're not going to give us someone, so we're going to go this on our own? So what does that mean?
Through the chair to Board Member Grimes, all the discussion about the district engaging in a process to engage outside counsel outside of the general counsel is invalid. And so if that were to happen, there would most likely be more communications from the general counsel that the action is invalid. That there just is not a process for that in Duval County under this charter. So what I, when I hear the clarification that the amendment is actually asked the general counsel, and if he says no, we're going to follow our own process, I think that's what I'm hearing. I think to your question, you know, it's not go ask the general counsel and then engage in your own engagement. It's, the answer is you cannot engage outside counsel.
On our own.
On your own.
You know, this process has been very sad in a lot of ways. And it certainly, there are many things, I think, all of us that have sat there in the meeting. You know, it has not been a nice thing. So I worry about making things harder on ourselves. I don't know. I mean, I don't feel like we've been treated well. But at the same time, I just, I don't, I don't know that this is going to be helpful.
Through the chair, when you say that, are you saying the amendment? Or are you saying the first state, the statement, recommendation, are you saying even with the amendment?
Even with the amendment.
Any other comments? Board Member Anderson?
I, I've thought a lot. And as I've gone out and I've spoken with people, I think every day I ask myself, you know, are we, do we fight for what is right? For what is good for children, for what is the appropriate purview and authority of this board? Are we willing to risk precedent for future boards, for future generations? Or do we pay to play and get the job done? And that is a very heavy question that crosses my mind every day. And I think that for the last couple of months, and it's been over 60 days since we passed this resolution, we have been as amenable and congenial as possible. When, you know, you quote Hernando County and it says to pick a date that's amenable to both parties. Again, the council could have done that. The council could have made the amendment, they could have moved forward with 2020. I have had council meetings or members, meetings with council members as recently as yesterday. And I continue to work toward finding common ground to cooperate and to make sure that this is something that we get done because our children deserve it in this community. I also have serious concerns about the way that this process has been rolled out, about the usurping of our authority as an elected body, as state constitutional officers. I think the amendment makes me feel more comfortable with going through the process outlined by this charter in Duval County and our consolidated government. I think if the general counsel comes back, which seems based on the memo we received today, that he will continue to support the memo that was issued by Mr. Durden in May and that would then become a legally binding opinion, it still precludes us from seeking outside counsel without their permission. At that point, a more difficult decision would have to be made. And so the way I understand this recommendation, as it is amended, is that we will ask for that permission. We believe that there is a conflict of interest here. We don't think that you can fairly represent both the school board and the city and the administration on this matter. We would like outside counsel. If that is denied, then I think that there's nothing left of us but to go outside of that, to invalidate the process, as Ms. Chastain is saying. I mean, I don't know what we would do next. And so I think that we should follow the process. Time is of the essence, as Board Member Smith Juarez has said, we are burning daylight. We need to move. I don't like the timeline that's been offered here. So I think if we can move through this process as quickly as possible to ask and potentially get denied, but maybe, maybe say, sure, you don't think that we can represent you both, go get your outside counsel, then we've already got this approved and we can move. My concern is if we deny the recommendation today, we would then have to come back and move forward with allowing our leaders to hire outside counsel. So I think the amendment helps me feel more comfortable with moving through the process and I can support the recommendation.
On the amendment, I, School Board Member Anderson raises a good point. If we don't, we can do nothing today. If we do nothing, what happens? It's going to be on 2020, okay?
Maybe.
But that's only if we satisfy all those questions and we allocate dollars from what I've been told on a per student basis. And that's not what we're doing. We are allocating dollars based on the need that we have identified through the engineering firm for the students in Duval County. And the only way you're going to get the council, and this is in my opinion now, the council to move forward for 2020, is to give the 200-plus million dollars to, for the charter school operators. And absent that, you're not going to get it in 2019. And you're certainly not going to get it in 2020 until you give in to that request. That's what it's about. The reality is we being held up, the students at Duval County are being held up until we allocate on a per student basis the sales tax revenue. And that's, that's the bottom line. And so if we do nothing today, if the council agrees at some point in time and we can satisfy their concerns, then it may be on the ballot in 2020. But there's no way it'll be on 2019 unless we do something today.
When the city council president joined us at our meeting, I believe it was last Monday, and he asked, what about 2020? He also, when we asked, well, when would we vote, when would it be voted on? He could not tell us when it would be voted on. So we don't know that it would, they haven't committed to a date to vote on it. We did get a vote at the end of June, which sent it back to finance. And it was deferred again. When it was deferred in finance and in rules, it was not to a date certain, it was just deferred. And I too, like Board Member Anderson, I met with a couple of council members yesterday. I had a, met with a council member this morning and I too, continue those conversations. I've got several appointments on my calendar for next week as well. It's certainly not my intent to not continue to work collaboratively with City Hall. The conversations I have had with city council members have been positive. But at this particular point, the conversation has lacked action. And I go back to the fact, and I know I've said it multiple times here in this meeting, the date was changed by the Finance Committee in June. It sailed out of there in a seven-zero vote and it was shot down in rules. And it didn't move at all in either committee this past week. That to me is a clear signal. We have answered questions and it's, it's a moving goalpost. It's never satisfied and I feel like we answer some questions for them to think of other ones. And so I'm not really sure what the bottom line is. I'm growing more and more concerned that there is a push to privatize public education in Duval County. And I would say as a board member who has the most charter schools in my district, that the charter schools in my district do a good job serving students. And I also believe that this demand that has been made that Vice Chair Jones mentioned is by a handful. I don't think it's representative of the charter schools that exist in my district or in many districts throughout the city. I think it is a demand coming from just a few and not representative of all of the charter schools. Is there any more discussion before we vote on the amendment? Yes? Yes?
I, I, I am sorry that this has turned into a power struggle and a food fight. It's sad for our city. But at the same time, the common ground here is the Attorney General. And if we can hold off on an opinion from the Attorney General, we could potentially save ourself a lot of extra litigation. Because as Ms. Chastain has said, we don't have the authority to do this. So by doing it, we are going to, it, the process is going to be drawn out. We have a, a remedy. We can get a remedy sooner than later. But we just have to wait a little bit longer. And so I would just encourage the board to wait on the Attorney General's opinion and then have this conversation at a later date.
So are there any other comments on the amendment? And Ms. Sparrow, could you read the amendment that, that's on the floor, just so we're clear?
Yes ma'am.
It, it was introduced, seconded, and there's been a lot of discussion.
Currently I have that the Duval Charter School Board amend the agenda item to become effective.
We're gonna take out charter. Duval County?
That the Duval County School Board amend the agenda item to become effective if the chairman's request of the general counsel to retain, to retain outside counsel pursuant to the charter is denied.
Does that sound correct, Vice Chair Jones? All right, um, we are going-
One more question or statement. So when we think about this, and I'm, I'm, I like the amendment much better than the original recommendation, even though I still have a lot of questions around what happens after this process. But at the end of the day, even, even what Board Member Joyce read about Hernando County, the city council still has the ability to figure out the date. We have stuff to work with the same group of people on the date. So there's still a little bit of control there. And we, we thought twenty twenty may be it. And now we're gonna go back after we do this. So it's just something for us to really think about is we still have to work with this other body to ensure that we get the right date or the date that we believe is amenable between the two parties. And that's something that I think we, we have to think about. And also I want us to, to, to make sure in that meeting tomorrow, I think we need to figure out as this body, like what are we requesting? Like are we asking about this August thirteenth? Can that be pushed up sooner? Does it have to be delivered to city council? He's our general counsel as well. Could it be delivered to us in an even faster, earlier date? If we provide a meeting and say, we're having a special meeting next week on Tuesday, can you come and present to us your? So these are the, that's the kind of stuff. I wanna make sure that we're asking the right questions in that meeting too, to ensure that we can get the right outcome. Because if he says yes or no, it needs to be based on what we're actually requesting of him.
Just to clarify, I keep hearing, um, we and, um, in regards to the meeting, my understanding is this meeting is with you and Jason Gabriel and not us, right? You'll, we'll carry the water.
Mm-hmm.
The royal we.
Um, without further discussion, I call for your vote on the amendment.
Vice Chair Jones, we're having some problems with here.
Mm-hmm. Ms. Sparrow, can you, can you do the votes and have a voice vote from Vice Chair Jones or?
Absolutely ma'am.
Do you need Vice Chair Jones to tell you his vote out loud? Is that a yes?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I could not hear Vice Chairman Jones.
Uh, yes.
By your actions, this has passed five to one. So we are now, I was gonna adjourn. We are now on the original item.
Officially move to adjourn?
No, I have to, we got another vote. We are now back to the original item before us. The Duval County School Board approved the hiring of outside legal counsel to provide legal services to the board regarding its May seven, twenty nineteen resolution regarding levy of discretionary one half cent school capital outlay surtax to be added to the November twenty nineteen ballot. And that is what we are voting on now.
As amended?
As amended.
Correct.
Yes. Do we discuss that anymore?
Madam Chairman, if there's more discussion, yes.
Would you?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I just, I think Board Member Willie brought up a good point in his last comments. And I, and I certainly think that as we, as we move out of this vote, you know, whatever the outcome will be, that I, I believe it is the will of the board. But I wanna say, you know, certainly for myself, that we do continue to work together. That there is still a, a goal here, that we do need to get this on a ballot. And that this, this approval here is, is in the case of a scenario where we are not allowed to stand up for ourselves, where we are not allowed to be fairly represented. And that our authority as an elected body is, continues to be, I think, under question. And so for that reason, I think we have to do this, we have to stand up for ourselves. But it is not at the expense of continuing to work together with our council members. I think in all fairness, many of those council members have said themselves out loud publicly on the dais that they don't want this. That they don't want this decision and they wish that it had not been placed in their laps. And so I think that this is just a, a way to move forward, to clearly define the roles so that we can get our job done and that they can get back to doing their job.
Any other comments? So we are now voting on the item as amended that I previously read. So I call for your vote. By your actions, you have passed this five to one. This emergency meeting is adjourned and we, um, we will resume at five thirty for our, what? Oh, I have to have a move to adjourn, I'm sorry. Board Member Anderson is seconded by Board Member Gods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We will take a five-minute break so that we can change things over for our next meeting.